Let's make sure it was in there.
Uh, mine's mine's gone.
Give it a second. Is it broken? Well, maybe yours is broken.
Meeting to order.
Yeah.
For the date of June 30th, 2020. And we'll start roll call to my left.
Homer, City Council.
Mike Warrington, City Council Member.
Shelby Carcelary, City Council Member.
Veronica Price, Mayor.
Troy Tabor, Council President.
Greg Schneider, Council Member.
Tim Berry, Council Member.
Mike Keller, Police Chief.
Donna Davis, Chief Financial Officer.
Andy Seville, Assistant Fire Chief.
Rick Lanzar, Director of Public Works and Utilities.
Andrew Kovar, In for JT Klaus, City Attorney.
Les Mangas, Director of Community Development.
Susan Renner, City Clerk.
Lance Onstop, Assistant City Administrator.
Okay, now at this time, let's uh, I'd like to call Jerry Smith, is that correct? Jerry Smith to lead us in invocation.
Let's pray here. Lord, we thank you for our public servants that serve our city. We thank you for those preparing even for these dry weather days and our firefighters and our EMTs during this unusual time of our nation. Lord, we thank you for the neighborhoods in which we live and we pray that we would continue to love our neighbors as ourselves. We thank you for the place where we live and we thank you for the peace that is here. And Lord, continue to guide us, protect us as you have provided for us, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Now, if you'd all join us in standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, this time, I'm gonna open up the floor for a public forum. If you'd like to say something to the council, feel free to do so. Please give us your name and where you live, please.
Thank you, I'm Susan Humphreys, the State Representative for the Andover area, and I haven't been able to come to a city council meeting in a long time because of session and then COVID. So I just wanna thank you all for your service. I know I've emailed back and forth with some of you. I'm more convinced than ever of the importance of local government, and so I just appreciate what y'all do, and I'm happy to be here, especially with what we'll be doing tonight. So, thank you for letting me come.
Thank you. Appreciate you being here. Anyone else? Oh, yes, we have a few folks that have sent emails that couldn't be here tonight and they would like to express their views to the council and to the public. So Susan will be reading a couple of those for us.
This first one is from Verna Amber Crombie, 207 East Stanton here in Andover. She just wanted to get her two cents in about Andover versus mask wearing and Governor Kay's new order. I have, I and several other residents are 100% in favor of masks, but do not feel comfortable attending the meeting tonight. Since those who oppose this are so loud and vocal about their rights, it is obvious that they would make the environment unsafe for those of us who would just stay home. Sheep, in parentheses, not going to endanger ourselves or risk exposure from people who practice no mitigation. And then I have a text message from Wayne Dugan. As a citizen in the at-risk group age 60-plus, Andover should follow the governor's mandate to wear a mask. There are a lot of younger people who feel they don't have to, and it infringes on their rights. But we have rights too, and we are not just as vocal as them. I know Butler County is not going to enforce it because of manpower, but in the grocery stores and all businesses in Andover, I don't feel comfortable with all, with all no masks on. Cedric County is going with the order for masks, and so should we. My age group is the silent minority. If brought up at council meeting, please let them know there are ones who want this to protect our lives. I would come in person to the meeting, but I don't go out unless necessary. That's all.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that'd like to speak to something like that, as far as the mask wearing and executive order coming into place? Anyone on council that'd like to chime in or speak up? Oh, yes, I'm sorry. At this time, I'll close the public forum.
Mr. Mayor, Council, as you guys are undoubtedly aware, there's been some developments over the past couple of days, and there's still a lot of unknowns, frankly speaking. What we do anticipate is that the governor will issue an executive order Thursday, requiring masks in public spaces where social distancing cannot be adhered to. What exactly that executive order will look like, no one knows. No one's seen it. We also anticipate that the Butler County Board of Commissioners, we know they have a meeting at 6:00 PM on Thursday to discuss whether or not they are going to adhere to that executive order or those restrictions within Butler County. What their ultimate response is going to be, we won't know until that time. One known factor that we do know is this morning at the Butler County Commission meeting, they did not vote to extend their emergency declaration. So staff is asking for a discussion tonight from the council on two items. What your thoughts are, what your directions are regarding the emergency declaration, so the city does have the ability to issue an emergency declaration. Emergency declaration and the mask topic are separate topics. Emergency declaration primarily has to deal with eligibility for funding for COVID-19 related responses. So that is one piece of, one topic we would like your guys' feedback on. Excuse me. The second is your thoughts on the requirements to wear masks within the city limits of Andover. So even if the Butler County chooses to not, to have a less restriction or less strict restriction than the state, we would like your thoughts on the mask restriction within the city. If that's something you guys are interested or not interested in, staff will then go back and follow that direction and present you with options. So with that as kind of the foundation, we would like to get your thoughts on those two subjects.
And we're not asking for a, we're not asking for a vote on the matter, we're asking just direction.
That's correct, because again, there's a lot of unknowns. So we will need to see what unfolds on Thursday specifically before we can address anything, produce anything official for you guys to consider, if you guys are wanting to consider something. So we'll go back and work and develop those and see what exactly the proper instruments are for you guys to consider, if that's the direction you wanna take.
So to, to clarify for myself and maybe some others, if we were to not declare an emergency ourselves, and there also wasn't one in the state, but then the federal government decided to help out the business owners by offering unemployment insurance or the extra payment as they did before, anybody in Andover then would not be able to receive it?
I can't answer that question definitively.
I think there's so many unknowns that we just don't know, correct?
Well, that needs to be a known, because if we don't declare an emergency and they don't, and then it comes out that they could offer that, and Vernado decides that, or a few people come in sick, or don't come in because they're sick, suddenly they can't get the help that everyone else in the United States is, that's not fair at all. So.
So my, the only answer I can give you definitively right now is, we've mainly been concentrating on the emergency declaration, is how it, how it impacts FEMA funding for reimbursements for our COVID-19 related responses. The CARES Act transferred to the city, or to the state and through Sparks Funds. We are not anticipating that to be dependent on whether or not you have an emergency declaration issued.
It sounds like where you want us to prematurely talk about something we don't have all the answers to talk about. So I think we need to wait till we actually see something before we actually discuss something.
And that's the type of feedback we're looking for.
I'm, I'm with Mike with that. I think we need to wait until the, the governor issues her executive order and then what the county does and then we kinda move forward.
Okay, well, I appreciate all that, too. I, I feel a little different in that we should probably plan if she's gonna go one way, but we would go a different way?
Yeah, I think we should as well.
Maybe we should just talk about that a little bit and see if we would have a consensus to do that.
Yeah, cuz I think we have a, I think we have an idea of what's potentially gonna happen, and it's better for us to have that conversation now than all of a sudden we have to plan a special meeting as soon as we can, if we wanna do something different.
So that being said, assuming that she had, she decides no, we're not gonna do a declare emergency in the state of Kansas, then, and then also Butler County doesn't, then that, that's when it would come down to us anyway to make that type of decision, right? So does anybody feel like we should declare an emergency?
Yes, I do.
And then the question would be, if there was an emergency declared, what can we even do? Can we, does it open up the opportunity for federal money like I'd asked before? Does it mean that we just let people know that, to be aware that we feel strongly that there's a problem here? By the way, last I looked, in Butler County, there were 11 active cases of COVID in the entire county. There's a little over 66,000 of us. So to put things in perspective a little bit, I'm not saying we should do it, I wanna talk about it, though. That's good.
But if we're talking about FEMA funding, that's really something that we're planning for the future, if things around us or in Kansas continue to increase, are we gonna have unnecessary barriers to that funding if we do need it?
Lance, what are other cities doing? What are other counties doing?
I don't know yet.
Everybody's trying to figure that out. So I and staff have been, we've been so concentrated on what we can do as a city that we haven't really had discussions with other cities. I mean, we've been scrambling to figure out what your options are, what our citizens' options are at this point.
Are there other counties in the state that do not have an emergency declaration in place?
I can't tell you that for certain.
I would, I personally would like to know that. I mean, are we gonna be the only county in 100, what do we have, 109 counties, I believe? Are we gonna be the only county that does not have a declaration in place?
We can get you that answer.
There's counties that have zero.
Yeah.
And, yeah, they're looking at not.
Again, I would imagine.
Yeah.
We wouldn't be the only one, but I don't wanna tell you that for sure, so without verifying that information.
And looking at the county, it'd be challenging to know that we've had, I think, 50 cases total since the outset.
Fifty-five.
Fifty-five? And that there's 11 active, I doubt they would say, oh, everyone locking, you know, in place, but I guess that's putting words in a county's mouth a little bit. I couldn't imagine.
The only advice that I would give you in regards to the emergency declaration, when you run the cost-benefit analysis of the emergency declaration, so the costs of issuing such, or adopting such declaration, you have to wrestle with, right? Like, what are the possible negative implications of issuing a, an emergency declaration? And what are the benefits of it? So what is that risk-reward for our city specifically? So if we do not issue an emergency declaration, our focus has been on its implications on, on possible FEMA reimbursing some of our COVID-19 responses. That's our sole focus at this point, as the potential downfall is to not.
So if we don't, if we do not do an emergency declaration, this county doesn't, isn't doing it, everything prior to right now, we're not, we're not believing we're gonna get reimbursed for, or is it anything after?
Our initial impression is everything after. So once you're operating in an environment without an emergency declared, any sort of expenditure directly related to the pandemic would not be eligible for reimbursement, it does not change the costs that we've expended under a previous declaration. Our impression as of now.
I would only say, I would only say that it's hard for me to react to something that, that I don't know what I'm reacting to, you know? We don't know, there's, even if, one can assume that Butler County will do what they wanna do because the people that make the final decisions answer to the people that who are asking for it to be done. But it's been my experience in this COVID that, and I'm not being, how do I say this? Minds, I've seen minds change daily. You know, I had, I had a citizen whom supported me beside theirself because I would not give the public more information. But I said, it's kinda hard to give the public information when it changes before I even sat down from the conversation I had. And I've had, you know, we've had the governor say things and then say it's something different on the phone calls we have with her on Friday, and then later in the news, have already, I don't wanna say changed her mind, but stated it differently to where it, so I'm uncomfortable declaring something that we don't know what, you know, we came very close last time to making a decision, and it would've been adversely affected us because Cedric County, being right next door, was not gonna shut their doors, and we were, and we would've lost all of our business to the, to a town next door. So these are things that we have to think about, not just, declaration, just to, I wanted, I'd like to be out in front of it, but I'd like to know, I don't wanna be out in front of something that's gonna run me over. That's just kinda where I stand on it. So, but, and we don't have to vote today, it's just we need a feeling of, do we have the, do we have the will to go on our own if Butler County doesn't do, as a council, do we have the will to go on our own if Butler County does not do what we think's appropriate in this matter? You know, do we stay with the governor? Do we stay with our county? That's, that's what we need to know if, if we wanna have a discussion after tonight to vote one way or the other.
Yeah, and, and to, to add to that, there is no emergency declaration before you tonight to take official action on. So what we're looking for is direction on, to see kind of if there's a consensus anywhere on whether or not you guys would like to consider one at a future meeting, if, pending what happens Thursday, right, or over the next week or so. So we kind of are anticipating your next council meeting is July 14th. If you feel like there's enough of a desire to at least consider the emergency declaration at that July 14th meeting, then we'll begin drafting one. But if you guys know, if your direction is no, we don't want to entertain that, then we won't go back and draft that and bring it to you for your consideration on the 14th. So we're not asking you to make a decision tonight, we just want you guys to, we're just asking you to give us.
Or sooner, you know, if, if, we don't know what the gov, and you know, I've read tonight, it might be Friday before she says it. So gets it all out and gets it clarified. So to make a decision before we know what her clarification is, if, if, it's hard for me to make a decision if they don't even really know what the dotted i's and crossed t's are, but I do wanna be prepared to make a decision if we feel very uncomfortable with the county's decision. So that's kinda where I'm at on it.
Where I would stand on it, if we were to vote and things were as they are today, right? So everyone loves to talk about data-driven stuff, so it's pretty simple to say we had 55 total since the outset, we have 11 in a county active and zero in Andover. Why would I declare an emerg, why would I go for an emergency declaration based on the data? The fact that people share it, and if you have this, it helps. I have no problem telling people, you really should do this, and there's, there's definitely data that shows that this does or doesn't work, whatever you wanna read, but I read the CDC before I came here tonight, and the very latest guidance is wear it. So I don't have a problem, you know, stating firmly the belief of me, anyway, that to listen to this, to wear this, to do what it's saying, but I, I would not vote for an emergency to force people to do it at this point, based on the data, nor what I hear from most people. Now, something that we have to think about up on this bench is that there's a lot of emotion and fear in the community, and that drives a lot of the decision-making. It could be that they don't wanna, wanna wear masks because maybe, I don't know, they think it's a political statement or whatever. So one of the things we try to do up here, I think, is disconnect from the, from that somehow, which is not easy because we're also humans, but to try to disconnect a little bit from the emotion. So if you do that and you look at the data, that's a good, good starting point, I think. Again, that's, that would be me, that's how I feel at this moment.
And just to make sure that I understood correctly, is that, and that we're all talking about the same things. The emergency declaration does not require Andover citizens to do anything. It doesn't require anyone to wear a mask or to change their lives in any way. It's stating that an emergency has been declared, and then the mask issue, whether or not you wanna mandate, not mandate, we can have that conversation separate as well.
Lance, what exactly is the emergency, then? I mean, what, the pandemic, is it just the pandemic, just a broad pandemic?
In response to the novel coronavirus, correct?
I'm all about being prepared for it, so if we have that plan come before us, that's fine, we can always say yes or no to it then. But I definitely don't want to get to July 14th, and we don't have anything in place or decision, and then we have to do it in an emergency meeting after that, or, you know, wait till the 28th. I mean, it all changes so frequently, but I think being prepared is not a bad thing either.
Yes, I agree. I would like to see the option. I, I'd like us to have the option, I don't wanna just say no right now.
I guess my, my big question is, if we do declare an emergency, what does that do for us? What does that do for us as a city?
Again, the only answer I can give you now is that it protects possible reimbursement from FEMA for.
So money, monetary value from FEMA?
And if you think there's any value assigned by declaring an emergency in, in regards to public education and communication of, of, of public health.
If you declare an emergency, does it not give special powers to whomever your health, I don't know what the term is, director or personally, or the mayor, if you were to declare an emergency?
So it, it can, yes, it can or it does. Depending on how the emergency declaration is drafted. So before, when you guys declared an emergency at the beginning of this, before Butler County drafted anything, you guys adopted a declaration, an emergency declaration, that gave the mayor power to count, to cancel meetings as necessary, public meetings. So we can be very specific regarding this emergency declaration and give no additional powers.
Okay, good enough.
Anyone else? So, so we have a direction then that you're satisfied with? Do we, we make a decision after we find out?
I'm just reading the Hoggle report right here, and it says that Kelly has called the meeting president, the finance council, for proposed statewide executive order requiring all hands to wear masks when public, in, when in public places where maintaining the six-foot social distancing is not possible.
I, I would say that on a couple of occasions, we've come up with the, the lead-up to, and then it changed, when it was actually said. So that's not a declaration, that's a, this might happen now.
That's not an executive order.
It's not an executive order, correct? It's just what's coming out of the news each day to be there.
So is it safe to say that we're gonna take a, take a pause and wait for the decision to come down from her and exactly what that entails?
But be prepared in case, so we don't have, have to wait another meeting later to make a decision.
And we can do that.
That's for the emergency declaration.
Yeah.
And the mask mandate is different, we haven't talked about that yet.
True.
So before we move on to that, just to make sure the staff is crystal clear on our expectations, is I think that I've got four, by my count, that have, would like to have, be prepared for this.
Be prepared, I'm with that.
We will do that.
Well, what does that mean?
So we will begin working, we will pay, obviously be watching what happens specifically, very specifically Thursday, and then we will work with staff, including the city attorney, in preparing an emergency declaration, taking some of the feedback that you guys have provided us here tonight for your consideration at your July 14th meeting, unless things drastically change. But that is what we're walking away with this, direction-wise.
I mean, our, we gotta keep in mind that going forward, our, our decision will also be a logistical problem for many, many of our staff and police officers and what have you, you know, so, so onward. Let's talk about the masks, alright?
So again, I don't know if you guys need me to introduce that any further and lay that foundation again, but briefly, we're anticipating that executive order will require masks when social distancing can't be adhered to. We're anticipating the, the, you know, Butler County to make a decision on whether or not that's applicable within the, within the county. Your discussion tonight is whether or not it's applicable within the city of Andover. Or not making a final determination on that, but again, giving us the direction to go back and figure out what that looks like from an effectuating document perspective.
I do a lot of travel with my job, and one of the states that I, you know, do a lot of traveling is New Mexico. And they have a, an order of wearing masks, but they also leave it up to the business owners to state how they want to interpret that. So it's not like it's enforced by law, by your police officers, but it's up to the, the owners of businesses, and it's also just up to you, how you want to do it as well. If you want to wear it, then you wear it, but if you go into a business, has a sign on the front of it and says mandatory to come in, you gotta put it on. So that's kinda where I am.
Would we have to do something by ordinance to allow our officers to, if we were to do nothing but allow the businesses to make their decision, and a business has a sign up that says you can't come in with a, without a mask? There's been plenty of stories now of people becoming very belligerent and forcing in, which is weird to me, but is there something we have to do to allow an officer to, to come in and remove that person, or make it a legal action, I guess, for, if a business states something specifically and you decide to just override it because you're, you feel like it, I guess? I mean, I don't.
No service?
Yeah. Trespassing.
I don't know how that would work.
Just, just for a little clarification, and let me know if I'm wrong here, but when the governor adopts this executive the governor adopts this executive order and by, by the law that was put into effect, KSA 48939, she has to take that order to the Finance Council within 24 hours. So that's probably what she's doing now before she submits that executive order. If the county does not take any action, then that becomes, the order is effective here in Butler County. Regardless, the, the only thing the county can do is they can resist that by, they have, there's a method, and they have to do several things to try and overrule her order or reduce it.
There's a power check bill that they sent through in the last special session that gave them the power to override the government.
That's that one. It's, so they would have to do that or else it becomes law here. However, you're talking about enforcement. It's my understanding, and we are waiting for clarification from the AG's office, which we hope to come shortly after the order. You can't give us guidance until the order comes out. So we're waiting on the direction or guidance from the Attorney General's office and our own attorneys. But under that KSA 48939, it made the violation of the governor's order a civil violation. Therefore, we cannot enforce a civil violation. The only people that can enforce that civil violation and file a civil action against the person that's violating that is the Attorney General or the county attorney. So it would be up to our county attorney whether he wanted to, it's my belief, that it would be up to him whether he wanted to file charges or not. And again, it's not charges. I, I misspoke. It's a civil violation, not a criminal. So our officers probably would not be able to take action. And before we did anything, I would want advice of our attorney on what rights our officers have to even ask someone's name or demand their name when they haven't violated a criminal statute. So we're, everything's kind of up in the air at this point, until we get that executive order.
The only thing I would add to that, of course, is you can tell the enforcement piece is pretty complex and frankly, up in the air in a lot of respects. I do think in the absence of the discussion of an executive order or the county's actions, whatever those might be, just as a matter of course, if a private business has a requirement that is otherwise not illegal or discriminatory for entry into their facilities, then the people coming in have to abide by that requirement, just like they would anywhere else, because that's the owner's right to impose those restrictions. And I suppose if the owner revoked that person's right to be present in that place, then they, the police would have, you know, something like a trespass that they might be able to enforce in that particular regard. But that's, you know, I think that's very specific to what your question is, and is just one of many pieces of this enforcement issue.
Yeah, I apologize. I meant to answer your question there. We already have that authority based on a trespass ordinance. If a business doesn't want you in there, we would come and say, you need to leave. And if you refuse to leave, then we can trespass you. But it'd have to be on a complaint of the business.
Because of how, I mean, how angry people seem to be getting with this subject matter, I, I wonder if there's something we can do to have, to let the business owner, we know that we have their back, right? And whether it's signage or public announcement, hey, if it says this, don't do it, or you're trespassing, it will come take care of you. I don't want to say it like that, but you know what I mean? Because I, I fear, I mean, I've seen stuff at Targets and Walmarts and videos and whatever, and people are beating down the people that are supposed to, that are making minimum wage to get in because they won't wear a mask. And if that happens here, I want you to take care of it.
And Troy, I would...
Go ahead.
Um, I would say that one thing that we can do is if Butler County does decide to re, to repeal the whole entire county, is that we can mandate ourselves. I feel like that's a way to have our businesses' backs, because they know that we have very publicly said that this, this, this is something that we're following here.
But the problem with that is if Sedgwick County does nothing, I know, I'm not a big mask wearer. I, I drive to Walmart instead of going to Dylan's here in town because I don't want to wear a mask, but that's my own personal...
So have we heard anything about Sedgwick County having a special meeting to repeal this? Because if they, if there's no special meaning to repeal, it's going to most likely go into effect.
I can't answer that. I don't know what Sedgwick County's plans are as of right now.
They're in the same situation we are in, that they do not have the manpower to effectively enforce it. It's just impossible. And, and to Troy's point, we have that in place now, that if someone goes into a business and they're belligerent, that's not civil, that's, that's criminal. So it's, it's a, and I'd like to think that our community is just a little bit different than some of our neighbors, that we may run into it from time to time, but it, as a rule, about as unruly as Andover gets us sitting in the parking lot at Rusty Rooster and drinking coffee. So I would like to think that we, we're better, better people than that. So again, I, I just feel like we have a hard time making a decision when we don't know what's before us.
And it's kind of the same theme with the emergency declaration. We don't have whatever document would be required for you guys to actually approve tonight to require masks within the city limits of Andover. We need to continue seeing what happens on Thursday that'll allow us the time what's, to see what's happening with our neighbor to the west in Sedgwick County and give us some more information. But again, we're trying to gauge direction of the governing body for the city of Andover and see if those are types of, those are the types of things we need to go back, do, we're going to do our research anyway, but do we need to start drafting and producing these things for you to, for you to officially consider them?
Again, I, I'd like to be prepared. So if we can consider it, I'd like to, we're not going to make a final decision here, so...
Yeah, that makes sense.
I will, I will say this, that if we're passionate enough in what we believe, then we'll make time for the citizens of Andover to meet before the 14th, if need be. You know, that's what we're here, to protect them and to serve them, and so we don't have to wait till the 14th. And if we believe in our, if we believe in our, our convictions, then, then we'll make time to, to, to do what we need to do.
I'm all about being prepared. I'm all about the education aspect of it versus the enforcement aspect. I mean, there's so many recommendations that the CDC already has, right? So, I mean, you know, what's next on the list? Washing hands if you don't, if you don't wash hands, that, you know...
Mandatory washing hands?
Right. I mean, that already needs to be.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, it's already...
You know, but that, that's, you know, that's what I'm talking about, is the education piece of it, not...
Yeah.
You know, once we get down the list of everything, you know, everything out there, I'm all about, you know, protecting others too. You know, as far as me wearing a mask and that may, you know, protect the community, that's fine too. I wash my hands after I go to the bathroom. So, I mean, I'm helping there as well. So, you know, it, but I want to be prepared. So, I mean, if there's something, and, you know, the CDC comes out tomorrow and says, you know, this whole thing stops if you wear a mask, okay, well, that might change my opinion on it, but having a little bit of knowledge can go a long way. And right now, we have limited knowledge, I guess, if you will. That's my piece. Sorry.
I think regardless of what we put into effect or what we don't put into effect, as Chief Keller said, there's not going to be active enforcement of, of this mask situation. So they're not going to be going down, forcing everybody. I think it is more education that we're, that we're saying this is our official stance on it than anything.
So are we comfortable to move on?
One other topic related to that, it's related to the mask situation. So we can begin doing our research that we needed to order, to, to draft, whatever that may look like. The timing of that one's a little bit more difficult. If you, if it becomes, you know, once we see what happens Thursday, is this something that you guys would like to consider before July 14th in a special meeting-type situation? Couldn't be any sooner than Friday, probably, obviously, but next week, as we continue to see what unfolds over the rest of this week? Is this something you want us to be looking for opportunities for a special meeting?
I think that'd be part of the planning, wouldn't it, to, that if it's, but I, I would, I would say it, well, what's council think? What do y'all think?
Sure, I think...
I mean, if there's a need, I'm, I'm down.
If there's a need, to have a special meeting.
If there's a need, yes.
Okay.
Is there a process in place where if, let's say Tuesday, suddenly something weird happens, and then boom, there's 500 cases in Andover? Is there a process for us to have an emergency meeting to be able to do something like that, like instantly? Or do you have to give notice?
Yes. You have to have three council members sign a request for a special meeting.
Okay.
You have a meeting, you can only discuss what you call a meeting for and nothing else.
Okay.
Meeting doesn't have to be an hour long or five minutes long. It can be however long you'd like to have it, but you can only discuss the one item and it's just a matter of three council members signing it.
And normally, there's specific notice requirements, which would still take effect, but in the case of an emergency, they can be truncated. So in your factual scenario, the answer is yes.
Okay. All right. All right, let's move on. Number six, acceptance of agenda.
Do we have any changes or is it as...
No changes. No changes, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion to approve the agenda as presented tonight.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Number seven, citizens' request, street closures 1816 East Astor to 1914 East Astor. Heath Train will come talk to us at this moment?
My name is actually Mark Barad. I'm at 1821 East Astor. Heath's a little shy of coming up, so figured I'd, um, this is just a simple request to close some roads, or to close a road in front of our homes. And about that, if, if, oh, you look on the map, there's about a four or five-home stretch that we're looking to close. In that area, we've got 15 kids looking just to have a little bit of a neighborhood party for just a couple of hours. And actually, everybody that is in that area of those homes has signed off on it. Everybody will be participating. We just know, being outside and everything for the summer, that there's some traffic that moves through there. It's kind of a straightaway, so can get a little bit faster than the posted speed limit and be nice just for all of us just to enjoy the holiday without having to worry about chasing down our kids and watching that. So appreciate your consideration on that.
Does the fire or police have any issues with that?
We, the police department, we reviewed his request and we approved it without any concerns. We just wanted to make sure everyone was aware that there's still, even though the streets closed, they're not allowed to shoot fireworks in the street, especially with this being on the fourth holiday.
Can you shoot them at the street? Don't answer that. I don't want to know.
We're good with it as well, as long as everybody understands that if there's an emergency, fire trucks, police cars, emergency vehicles will still be able to come through if needed.
Absolutely.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to approve the request to allow the closure from 1816 East Astor to 1914 East Astor on July 4th, 2020, from 10:30 a.m. to midnight, as requested.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you for coming to us.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Seven two, street closures Deerfield Circle and Crescent Lakes. Steve, I'm sorry, I don't want to butcher your last name.
Voicing.
Yeah, I'm Julie Voicing. We're at 735 North Deerfield Circle. We put in this request last year, had a very successful block party and would just like to close off a whole block. As they mentioned before, our entire neighborhood participates, our entire block participates, and it would just like be 6 p.m. to, just short of midnight.
Same question for the police and fire?
I don't know. Have we seen this one? Susan?
They were here last year. Yes, they were here last year, and Fire Chief Russell just had the one concern regarding, because it is a cul-de-sac getting in and out of there if it was necessary to bring in a fire truck. And there was no issues that they had to get a fire truck there, but that he just doesn't want any of the fire hydrants blocked anywhere, and that you guys are completely and totally aware that if somebody does need to come through there in a truck, that they can get in and out without any problems.
Yep, there'll be room.
And then, of course, the no shooting fireworks, like Chief Keller said.
This is how many annual in a row?
Ten.
Ten?
Yes, ten years.
I've been to this, that block party one time. So it was pretty fun and everyone was very knowledgeable and had a good time and, and did not need the, the fire truck there at the time. So I think it's been a good block party.
One time, did they not invite you back again?
I have an invite to come, uh, just to this next month.
Now, this will be on the third, though, right?
Okay.
Yeah, this was on the Friday.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the request to close Deerfield Circle at Waterview in Crescent Lakes on July 3rd, 2020, from 6 p.m. to midnight.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Here we are at eight one, firefighter of the year. You do not look like Chief Russell. Says right here on my deal, Chief Russell. You're much more handsome than he is, I'm just saying.
Yeah. So Mayor and City Council, thanks for having us on the agenda here tonight. So each year, we recognize one of our many outstanding firefighters with the Chief Walt Eisenhower Firefighter of the Year Award. It's always difficult to choose the winner of that award because we've got so many high-performing and outstanding members of our department. So, but anyways, Chief Russell did come to a decision. Anyways, the, the award is presented by Andover Fire Rescue and Butler County Fire District One to the firefighter who has demonstrated a sense of pride, dedication, and perseverance to this fire district, as well as out, an outstanding sense of compassion to the citizens this fire district serves. So tonight, it's my honor to present to you the 2019 firefighter of the year, firefighter John Gabriel. So Chief Russell gathers nominations from the entire department, department towards the end of the year, for everybody to nominate their, their pick. And here's just a few things of what John's peers said about him. He said he's great to work with, he is selfless, he truly cares about others. He shows pride in our department and our city. He's always got a positive attitude. He's passionate about his job. And my favorite comment was, I am blessed to work with this guy and call him my brother. So congratulations, John.
Thanks, Troy. Thank you.
Congratulations.
I'm smiling.
Hold down for just a moment, so we can see.
I can kind of trust.
Now we have to be six feet away.
Just don't breathe. Don't sneeze on each other, don't pop on each other, please do not spit.
Take the picture, Mom.
Take the picture, Susan.
So I'm not sure if this was on the agenda, but just real quick, in a similar fashion, each year we recognize a local business with a community service award. So, and again, similar to the firefighter of the year award, we all vote, we all put on our nominations for who's, who's really stepped up and who's stood out amongst our local businesses. And we've got so many here in Andover that support the police and fire department, we're very fortunate, but anyways, this year's, or 2019's community service award goes to Spalding's Food and Drink. And Ray and Lila are here to accept the award, so here you go. I'll just say that they're, they're always willing to help us out when we're in need and when we're not. I mean, they're just, they're just always there for us. So we appreciate that. Every year, they have a .27K event that's... Every year, they have a .27K event that some of you are aware of, and that literally raises thousands of dollars every year for the Police and Fire Foundation. So we really appreciate your support and help and fund that organization. So thanks again. We appreciate you guys.
Mr. Mayor, I have one more award that I'd like to hand out. All right, this award is the Big Four Award for the fire department. The Big Four Award is do your job, treat people correctly, give all-out effort, have an all-in attitude. Each year, Chief Russell selects someone from the department that has truly gone above and beyond the call of duty. For 2019, Andy Seville is the Big Four Award winner. Andy is truly special. He is technically a part-time employee. He chooses to do all that he has done for the department and our community. He could have easily chosen to not do anything and we would just be forced to figure out how to do things in the department. He covers a duty officer rotation when he takes call, takes call 24 hours a day for one week a month by choice. He responds when he is available to critical incidents, even when he's not in his duty officer rotation by choice. He provides his own vehicle to respond in by choice. He spends countless hours of working on special projects like concerts, emergency equipment, and many, many more by choice. He truly exemplifies what the Big Four Award means. Thank you, Andy, for all that you do. It is my honor to present him the 2019 Big Four Award winner. Got to give it back.
Right? Thought it would be a little tacky to ask for an award.
All right, next item up is A-2 AAA of Kansas Traffic Safety Award.
Mayor Price, members of the council, thanks for the opportunity to appear tonight. My name's Sean Stewart. I am with AAA Kansas, which is the American Automobile Association. If you're not familiar, the travel club and insurance company. I'm here to present the Andover Police Department with the AAA Kansas Community Traffic Safety Award. First, I want to recognize Troy Wells. He's with the Kansas Department of Transportation. He's a law enforcement liaison and he works with law enforcement agencies all over the state on a variety of traffic safety issues for KDOT. So he works with us on getting police departments and sheriff's departments all over the state to apply for this award. Being an Andover resident for the past 16 years, I'm particularly proud to honor the Andover PD with their ninth consecutive AAA Traffic Safety Award and their sixth consecutive Platinum Award. The Platinum is the highest award that we provide. Andover PD is recognized for a variety of programs in traffic safety, including participating in a community-based traffic safety committee, having a departmental policy requiring the use of seat belts, participating with the high schools on the highly successful student-led seat belt program called SAFE, where seat belts are for everyone, providing child safety seat inspections and fittings to help Andover parents, engaging in selective enforcement programs, targeting areas around the community, especially construction and school zones for speed violations and high-vehicle collision areas. And finally, enforcement of school bus stop violations and increasing the fine for this violation, among many other activities. These efforts have led to an improvement in traffic safety statistics in Andover and those continue to improve over the years. So I'd like to thank you all as the city leaders for your support of Chief Keller and his team. You know, great police departments like Andover PD don't exist without your support for them, so I'd like to thank you all for that. I'd also like to recognize Chief Keller and his entire team for the great work they've done and honor them with the Platinum Award again this year. Congratulations, Chief.
I wanted, obviously, he called my name out here, but I'm not out there doing the work these guys are. We started this program, then Lieutenant Haas Stewart started this program nine years ago, and we won our first Silver Award the first year we did it. And then the next two years, he worked hard and we got Gold Awards. And then we upgraded. Actually, I don't remember if Haas got the first Platinum or not, but then Lance Parker took over the program and took us through the last few Platinum Awards. He did a lot of this work. Ben, Lieutenant Graber, told me tonight that, well, I didn't earn this one, but he has taken over the program and running with it for 2020 and 2021. So the bar's been set pretty high, Ben. He knows what he's got to do. But we thank AAA for this award and we thank you for putting up with us. Officers work hard on writing those tickets, keeping people safe. And we've been able to accomplish this. Really, we write a good number of tickets, but we write a lot of warning tickets too because our goal is to just slow people down and protect lives. So thank you.
Thank you, Sean. All right, next item, consent agenda. Do we have any changes to that or do we? Consent agenda, no?
No changes.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda items 9.1 through 9.8 as presented. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Number 10, excuse me, Tuscany Third Phase Water and Sewer Plan. Rick will speak to us about that this evening, is that correct?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. So this phase would be between existing Tuscany and what is commonly referred to as Winchester Estates. This would be the final phase in this subdivision. It is a relatively small section and this one is a 75, internal improvements are being assessed and 25 are city-at-large. That is a little different than sometimes, so I wanted to make sure that you were called out on that. And this is for the water and sewer plants to begin the subdivision work for the inner subdivision improvements. If you have any questions, I'd like to try to answer them if you have any.
Why is this one different, Rick?
It relates back to, and Lance may want to chime in on this, but it relates back to our agreements we have based on the fact that we have some subdivisions that were inside the NRP area and some weren't. Remember, if you guys were part of, I think you might have been part of that conversation in Andover, so.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move to accept the plans and authorize the bidding of sanitary sewer and water main improvements for the Tuscany Edition Third Phase.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries 6-0. All right. 159th Street, KTA Bridge replacement. Lance is going to speak with us about that. Yes, yes. In preparation for the Meadowlark School Campus Development on 159th Street, as well as the replacement of the 159th Street Kansas Turnpike Bridge, the city laid a new sewer interceptor along 159th Street on the east side of the road. Part of that sewer line, it's very deep, 20 to 25-foot deep cuts. Part of that traversed between the Teradyne Maintenance Building and the embankment for the bridge in a very narrow area. A year or so ago, we got a temporary construction easement from the folks at Teradyne just to allow us access to get equipment and materials in and out to do this project. We knew in advance that the heavy construction traffic would destroy the driveway back to the Teradyne Maintenance Building, so we put the replacement of that driveway in the sanitary sewer project. It ended up that the bridge project was so close on the heels of the completion of the sewer project that we didn't replace the driveway with the sewer project, we just kicked that can down the road to the road projects because we knew we would need access for the bridge project also. We're past that point now. It's time to replace Teradyne's driveway. What we're doing is shifting that work from what was a sewer project to be a change order on KDOT and the city of Andover's contract for the 159th Street Bridge and pavement project. It actually came out to be a little bit cheaper in adding that work to a paving project.
So when's the bridge going to be done, we estimate?
The bridge itself in September, and at that point, traffic will be switched around to be open from 13th Street south down to Teradyne and close to one way from Teradyne Street down to Central for the next phase of work.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I move to accept the proposal from Pearson Construction to replace a Teradyne Country Club Golf Course Maintenance Building, driveway, and authorize the Kansas Department of Transportation to add the change order to the contract for 159th Street KTA Bridge Project N-0655-01. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries 6-0. Consulting Engineer Services. Lance is going to speak to this.
Our city engineer position has been vacant since December of 2019. We've had that position advertised since then, seven months, and have had no success in hiring a full-time city engineer for the city of Andover. We had anticipated some difficulty in hiring that position, so we did have some fallback plans, if you will, one of which is to draft a request for qualifications for a consulting engineer or a firm to act as the city engineer when necessary. Tonight, the consideration is for authorization for staff to actually distribute this request for qualifications. The process, the RFQ asks for submitted interested firms or individuals to submit by July 30th. Selected firms to negotiate a contract with or to interview will be chosen by a selection committee that will be made up of both elected officials and staff members. I would anticipate your July 14th meeting will have an item on your agenda to approve that selection committee. I can ask or answer any questions you guys may have about that RFQ.
Are we still looking to hire an engineer after we get this, you know, get a contract or no?
Once we choose, once you guys consider and choose to enter into a contract, that contract will be specified for an amount of time to be determined. I think we introduced the possibility of a three-year contract in that RFQ, but at that point, I would assume we will not be advertising for a full-time city engineer position. But we still do have those positions listed on the website, so all of our, this is just adding another option for us.
So if all the clouds come together and the moon, I mean, everything fits right and we find somebody that would fit that, we could get out of this contract and hire the new city engineer or no?
No, not after you have elected to enter into a contract.
This is pretty common for a city our size, even cities two, three, four times bigger than us, to have a consulting engineer firm or individual, so it's pretty common.
That would be our engineer then, for that three years, so to speak.
For whatever the terms of that negotiated contract are, yes.
Thank you. I don't have any questions.
It's a little less expensive, isn't it?
It depends on how you define that, right? So typically, if it's a staff person, that person's going to be funded 100% generally from property taxes. So we have transferred that expenditure from a personnel to a contractual expenditure, right? Additionally, if we contract out a drainage study or some sort of other engineering or plat review or whatever, if it's associated with a specific project, you can use project-specific funding to pay that consulting engineer, whereas that was difficult to do for a city employee engineer. So you have a more diverse set of revenue sources or funding opportunities to fund this position than if they were just an employee.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve posting and releasing the request for qualification for Consulting Engineering Services.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Lower the mic, Susan.
Motion carries 6-0. All right, I got lost. Recycling and Trash Utility Fund. Lance, are you going to speak to that?
I am. As you guys know, we're going to go ahead and continue our 2021 budget series here and do some presentations over some utility funds. So before we get started, as you guys know, as being, you know, elected to represent the citizens of Andover, that budget decisions, what to do with taxpayer, you know, tax revenue is probably one of the most highest callings you all have as an elected body. So before we get started, I'd like to reiterate that fact that these decisions that you make during the budget process are extremely important for the constituents and you guys generally do a really good job. So that hopefully bought me 15 minutes to actually talk about these budgets, right? So your recycling and trash budget. So this is a utility fund. As you guys know, a utility fund is not, the revenue is not generated from property taxes, it's actually generated by those that utilize recycling and trash services. So a kind of a summary of the recycling and trash utility fund, you'll see the contractual line item is by far the most significant part of this budget. That's, and there's a slight increase that we're putting, that we're planning, that we're budgeting for 2021. Now, this, the monthly rates that the end users or customers pay, we bill those, they remit that payment to us, and then we reimburse our preferred vendor, which is Waste Connections. This is recorded as this contractual expenditure. So that $665,250 is largely us just collecting what you citizens pay as water or as trash and recycling and then just reimbursing it back to Waste Connections. The other major, in quotation marks, because it's about $4,000 of that $665, is postage related to billing. So it's a pretty simple, straightforward budget. The $3,100 that you see in the commodities line is again related to billing and computers to actually produce those bills.
Are we permanently contracted with them? I mean, is it year-to-year?
No, I think our current agreement with Waste Connections, Rick, and you might want to correct me on this if I'm wrong, runs through 2021. So no, not forever, 2021.
I would add that, so probably sometime after you finish budget in 20, actually, it runs through, I'm sorry, Lance, it ends at the end of 2021. So we would start a process after, probably right after you get done with budget or during budget, maybe even because it could have some budget ramifications on what you guys want to do with that program going forward so that we don't get down to December scrambling around trying to figure out what we want to do. around trying to figure out what we want to do.
Any comment?
That's something we'll talk about at a future date, right?
Yes, sir.
The contract and stuff.
Yep, like all agreements, you guys will have to approve that, so it'll come back to you. You guys are more than, I'm sure, aware of the recycling and trash rates within the city, but just to be, give you as much information as possible, so within the city, trash, Waste Connections is $10.88 a month, recycling is $4.69 a month, and then our commercial customers that choose Waste Connections have a rate of $14.29. Of that rate, the city generally, and there is a rounding situation this year to make it actually all equal out, generally, we receive 45 cents for each trash customer, 40, or 50 cents, 51 cents in this instance, for each recycling, and again, 46 cents for each commercial customer. That is remitted to us as part of the rate because we handle the billing. It pays for a lot of those contractual commodities that aren't reimbursed back to Waste Connections. The annual rates built into that contract are based on the Consumer Price Index, the CPI. They did increase 1.36% last month, the month before, within the past two months. Still far cheaper, I can tell you anecdotally from what I pay quarterly in a different This just compares your revenues versus your expenditures, as you might imagine, with the bulk of this budget being just reimbursing Waste Connections for what we bill. Those two things are gonna match up very closely, so we have that small amount of surcharge on top to handle the billing, and that's why you'll see a little bit of a discrepancy there, but generally, what comes in goes back to Waste Connections.
Why 17 and 18 took a loss?
I'd have to ask, Donna, do you remember?
Also included in this budget is, which we're not showing here, is some personnel cost, and it may have been that particular year. We're trying always to make sure we don't charge too much to have personnel to them, but yet charge enough, and so it took a little few years, and I think there was also the inserting machine, they got charged a portion of that as well.
And this is also minus transfers, so I'd like to show you guys expenditures without transfers, so there might have been a buildup of an end-of-year balance as well, which we'll see, there should be a transfer slide in here too, so something minor along those lines. So operating expenditures, again, a bulk of this is contractual, as the consumer base grows, that expenditure grows, we collect more, thus we reimburse more. Donna alluded to, we do have a portion of personnel that comes out of this budget, which you see down in the yellow, so this is to pay a portion of the salaries for the employees that manage the contract, who manage the billing, all of the things associated with this service. And then obviously, the commodities is a fairly minor facet of this budget. Not a capital-intensive fund, obviously, billing supplies, like I think it's a sorter or whatever it is that stuffs envelopes, things like that.
The envelopes, the bills that we print on, the postage, it's all prorated between trash recycling, wastewater and stormwater, with stormwater getting the bulk of that cost, but we do assign a small portion of it to recycling and trash and to stormwater.
And you have a little bit of an anomaly here in the transfers for 2017, so traditionally, there's not a large transfer that comes out of this, but in 17, there was, and that was a contribution to the amphitheater project. We have about, and you can see kind of how it's changed over time, over the past 10 years. Again, these are largely just small percentages of various employees that whose primary functions rest elsewhere than the recycling and trash service, but do participate in that, so we don't have 0.7 of a person that's dedicated to this, it's small percentages of multiple people. It's remained relatively flat for the past four budget years. Any questions about the recycling and trash fund, I will attempt to answer.
Do you verify that they're indeed recycling and not just throwing it in landfill?
We do, and Rick, I mean, in all seriousness, we get that question, and I know there's a lot of communities that have been battling with that question, so I know Rick has engaged Waste Connections, and he can provide a more nuanced answer to why our situation is different, but the latest report we have is only 20% of what's being recycled is going to the landfill, 80% of what's being recycled is being recycled. I would invite Rick to give you a little bit more nuance to that.
So basically, Waste Connections has got the only automated sorting plant in the state of Kansas, and they also have negotiated contracts with local sources to recycle a lot of materials, so they have kind of a corner on the recycle market for the residential market anyway. So a lot of the other vendors, you'll see some vendors have just quit offering it because they have to take it to Waste Connections or to another site that doesn't have what they call a MRF site, which is an automated sorting facility. So they kind of have a big advantage, and I know, I've heard, well, Augusta just recently quit recycling, well, they were taking their material, but they had their own trash and recycling company, the city did, and then they were hauling it to Waste Connections. Well, Waste Connections obviously is gonna take care of its customers that they're picking up first, so they, I'm guessing, raised the rates fairly substantial on Augusta from some of the discussions we had. I'm a member of the Solid Waste Committee for Butler County, and I listened to their discussions about the rates they were getting charged. We do get those questions from time to time, so about every time I get it, I reach out, back out to Waste Connections to verify they are still recycling. They do have some issues in the recycle market right now with contamination and so forth, and thus you have a diversion rate. Earlier in the year, when I got the question, I talked to them, and they said they had a 30%. When I reached out to them after a question I had again recently, as recently as this week, their reply back was, they really can't explain why, but the diversion rates went down to 20, so either people are getting better about not contaminating the material or something, but it's went down, which is good news. And we've talked about trying to do a outreach at some point with them and get the word out about, because some of the things about recycling has changed. They are wanting the materials a little cleaner than it used to be, it used to be just throw it in, we'll take it, but China has balked at that, and so it's changed a lot of that, where some of those products went there. That's a long-winded answer to say, we do check from time to time, and we have a standing invitation to go up to their site and watch them recycle anytime you would like to. Holler at me, and we can take a trip if you'd like to.
I get my bill by email. What percentage email versus the ones you have to mail?
I would say the bulk is still by snail mail, but we do have quite a few that do email. There's some that do, don't want any bill, they just automatically set it up with their bank, they don't want an email, they don't want a paper bill, they just know it's gonna be the same amount, so they don't want either. But we do send out quite a few of the emails, but again, the bulk is still the paper.
I didn't even know we sent it.
If you'd like that option, let us know.
So when you send them out via email, do they get the information that's stuffed in the envelopes as well?
Yes. Jenny has worked with Julie, and they have set up a system where those email addresses, Jenny has them, and she's able to send out the attachment as well.
I knew they did the automat, Jenny and I talked about the automat, I didn't realize you guys sent an email out, a e-bill per city.
Would you like the information on that?
I would, actually.
Okay.
I think we need to share that more, because I consider myself pretty savvy with the Facebook page on City of Andover, but I don't ever receive any.
Okay. We'll try to include an insert at some point, a little blurb about that.
Yeah, personally, I...
Okay, I will make sure you get that information.
And not to stretch this subject out any longer than necessary, but I think it's probably a good time to remind council that our compost site here in the park, a lot of public events, and the library, golf course, and the city facilities get complimentary trash service, and some events get complimentary trash and recycling as per the agreement, so it is included in the agreement, but just as a reminder, that sometimes gets forgotten in the conversation.
I'd like to appoint Tim as a liaison to go check that.
I'll be good. Go.
All right.
We'll wait for you. I'm sure I come back.
So can we get a motion?
There is no motion.
No motion, no action, so just...
Then mine.
Unless you need a motion.
On to the, I'm talking about Troy. Troy being laid on. Hey, Andover elect me, right? Stormwater utility stuff.
So again, as we move to the Stormwater Utility Fund, this is, like it says, a utility fund, so the revenue to fund this fund is provided by, in theory, those who use more of its services pay more to the fund for those services. So anyway, a little bit of a background on the Stormwater Utility, it is an operational division of our Public Works and Utilities Department, so you're Director of Public Works and Utilities, Rick Lanzareff is the one who oversees these functions. We have an engineering technician who is, which is actually a vacant position that we're advertising for now, oversees the, kind of the day-to-day operations with oversight from Rick. So if you, I know some of you might not be 100% aware, being new, what the Stormwater Utility actually does, but the Stormwater depart or division, if you will, does construction site inspections, so all these sites that are in construction, they inspect to make sure they're protecting water quality. So its main function is to protect water quality, not necessarily efficacy of drainage, which we'll talk about a little bit more. They do a lot of public involvement, education and outreach, they work with, they're within our school system, working with various grades on ecosystems and water quality. We look for illicit detection, or we try to detect illicit dumping, if you will, so people putting things into the water system that should not be there. We do have a water quality sampling program, so at least four times, and most often six times a year, we collect water that comes into the city through the creeks, and that goes out of the city to make sure that, and compare those, to make sure that we're not, there's not activities happening within the city limits that are impacting our downstream neighbors' water quality. We're required to do that, we're required to do four, most of the times we do six, because we like six. But, and then we also, they do work, like we have a lot of trucks on the road, we have a lot of workers that are out working, we do training with our own city employees, and we inspect our city facilities to make sure that we're also not producing too many water pollution. This is all permits required with the federal government, we have to do these things, and the Stormwater Utility was created in order to fund these requirements. So a summary of the budget, the proposed budget, we're actually proposing a decrease in the contractual items for the Stormwater Utility. There's a slight increase to the commodities, there is an increase in the capital outlay. The capital outlay project that we are proposing for 2021 is, as you see over on the right, is a drainage study for what would be the northwest corner of Central and end of a road, that quarter section of land. We talked about this particular piece of property or this area yesterday at our workshop about the streets. A lot of times, those things are combined, right? You go in and you wanna do a street project, you better have an idea how the drainage system works too. So we are proposing that we do that investigation along with the street improvements to make sure that we're tackling both of those things at the same time. Now, overall, you do see an increase of 20.9% throughout the contractual commodities and capital line items. You will remember, some of you will remember, we did adjust the stormwater rates in December of 2019 that went into effect March of 2020. We're estimating that we are going to add an additional $50,000 a year in stormwater revenue coming in. So we see an increase in expenditures of roughly $12,000, but we're anticipating an additional $50,000 in revenue. So looks like an increase, but it's also an increase in revenues. That those stormwater rates were increased for this specific reason, one of those was to do more capital projects for actual drainage, which we were never set up to do under the previous rate structure. Also, as said here in the highlights, we had been, we have been subsidizing the stormwater personnel with other funds, and part of that rate increase was also fully fund one position, so the person charged with stormwater activities is now solely funded primarily, and I'd have to check the exact percentage, I think it's a full 100%, will be funded through Stormwater Utility, not subsidized by the general fund or property tax.
In addition, there'd also be, again, small pieces of other personnel that handle the billing and stuff would also be charged to this.
Yeah, and you'll see on the FTE slide that you've seen on the other departments or the other funds, we'll talk briefly about that as well. That rate adjustment that we did in 2019 that went into effect in March of 2020 did not impact any of our residential customers at all. So on the left, you will see the bigger lot that you own, the more you pay. Maximum of $8 a month, minimum, most of our customers are one acre or less, single-family homes, so most people pay $2 a month. The only adjustment was to our commercial or non-residential customers or properties. Theory, again, business has much more concrete, much more rooftops, much more impervious area, they produce a lot more water runoff and essentially a lot more potential pollution. So we did adjust those rates. Before, they paid the same price that our single-family customers paid. So we adjusted that. That's where, so a minimum of $20 and a maximum of $80, depending on how big the site is, we should generate, we're estimating about $161,500 in revenue, which again, is about $50,000 more than we have in years past. And this compares expenditures to revenues, your revenues are in the green, your expenditures without the transfers are pink. You will see over the last few years, our expenditures definitely started to outpace our revenues because we started making more decisions about funding capital projects, drainage projects, which is, again, an impetus on why we've recommended, why you guys ultimately approved a rate adjustment. So we should start to see this balance out a little bit more while also doing, increasing the level of service that we provide from a stormwater utility. So operating expenditures, they kind of fluctuate, we've had some vacancies on the stormwater position over the last few years, which kind of sees the, you know, the ups and downs and the personnel actuals. Your contractuals and your commodities remained relatively flat, there's an increase in some contractuals for some educational and advertising things in response to some permit changes. Again, the federal government tells us largely what we have to do, not what we do, like they tell us the activities we have to do, and we have to figure out how to meet them. Capital, you see, again, for a long time, we didn't really have substantial capital expenditures. In 18, we did, the Stormwater Utility did partially or fully fund the drainage improvements around the Andover High Athletic Stadium, the district stadium, they paid for some improvements there, and then again, we have proposed cap or study for 2021. Transfers, we do transfer regularly into a reserve fund to save up for large expenditures if we need to. The $55,000 that you see in 2017, again, was a transfer for, or was a, for the amphitheater So your FTE, the amount of employee or dedicated hours to this function, we're seeing an increase or we're showing an increase of .9 FTs to 1.6. Again, we've increased the revenue in order to pay for this, we have a dedicated person in addition to a portion of Rick's salary, whoever sees it, a portion of some of our other general employees come out of this as well.
And what's that red writing say on the top right?
It's a good question. 2021 engineering technician approved during, so that's just giving you a note on why that increase is there. So when they approved, when you all approved of the rate increase, you approved that engineering technician position, fully funded by that rate increase. Questions? We're almost there.
We're still quite a bit lower than our neighbors on our price for stormwater off like, like, commercial, is that not true?
Oh, substantially. So the maximum, even the biggest sites with the most impervious area, I think, I mean...
Eighty?
So it would be 80 times 12, which is, so it's monthly, 720?
Yeah.
Donna? 960. So, so yes, and we, and part of that rate adjustment, we did a comparison with all the other, our neighbors, and it was not uncommon that in which, in some other cities that surround us, that there was multiples, thousands of dollars a year. Which if you guys are interested in that data, we have obviously still, and we can provide that to you. But there were substantial differences between even what we adjusted it to and what others are charging.
So we went from eight bucks to 80?
Yes.
It was substantial for what we had, you know, had gone from, but.
But compared to other places, it's still very cheap.
So ours is based on just property size, right? So if you're five acres or more and you're a non-residential, you're $80 a month. A lot of other places, a lot of other cities use what's called, you know, they base it tailored specifically on the square footage of hard surface you have. So a Dylan's or a Kansas Medical Center, or, I mean, you're talking.
You get more, more parking lot, you get paid, you pay more.
Exactly, so ours is similar, but not quite as complicated. And it's not eight, nine, 10, 12. I think the highest was $15,000 a year.
It's, it's a, generally speaking, people think that pollution comes from wastewater plants and there couldn't be furthest from the truth, it's less than 1%. Most of our, most of our pollution comes off of parking lots, streets and what have you. And farmers are doing better, but they were, they were complicit for a long time as well. But wastewater is by far the least of the, of the problem. And I, I got another question. Rick, do the culverts between from Central to, to the next street over, and then from that street to Second Street, are there any, any plans in the future to clean those out where they flow better, or, or do we need to clean them out?
Central, I'm sorry, I'm not following where you're.
It's a, there's.
Oh, okay. So we can look at it, we're.
They run into the Green Valley, of course.
So yeah, so part of that study would also look at that, but we, we look at cleaning out those periodically. And right now, we're concentrating on the ditches and trying to play some catch-up on that. And then we'll move on to some of the culverts. Some of those work needs to be done, really ideally if it's frozen or extremely dry. So maybe it'll dry out a little bit now. The problem we have in Andover is we have a fair amount of individuals that like to water. And even our drainage ways, really in the summer, even in a hot, dry period, don't get real dry. So we drain equipment down in there, sometimes we tend to lose it in there. So last year it really got, you know, never really frozen much. We really wanted to deal with the culvert, actually underneath, underneath the end of a road by the high school. That one needs to be cleaned out too. So we have a few that we need to look into and try to clean out.
It's not real high on the priority list, I was just wondering if that's something we was on our radar at some point.
We do look at them and, and those are actually, correct me, Les, if I'm wrong, but I think those even fall inside the bridge inspection list because those culverts are big enough to be bridges. So those get inspected, is it every two or three years, I forget the cycle? Every two years, yeah.
Thank you. One more, isn't there?
I'll go on.
Last one, the water utility fund. So again, utility fund, you pay, be, be your rates to whoever provides you your water based on your consumption, right? Now, the only difference between this is the city of Andover doesn't have a water department. We don't provide the water. So the fund that you're gonna see here is pretty light. So traditionally, like depending on who provides your water, either the city of Wichita or rural water district will bill you directly. So different than, contrast that with recycling and trash utility fund, where we don't come pick up your trash, much like we don't provide your water, but we don't bill you for your water, that comes directly from either the city of Wichita or the rural water district.
Lance, what is the percentage, I mean, how many households do bought rural water?
Oh, it's small, extremely small percentage. It's just the Prairie Creek addition and some other random ones, right, Les? Very, very small percentage, and it's eastern Andover. So if we continue to develop east and north, then that becomes, you know, that, that might switch, but large majority is with city of Wichita.
Is it true that the rural water districts cannot be changed? Like we can't buy parts of them anymore? My understanding is at some point, some places did, but at this point, there is no ability to, to, for them to give up their, so that we could take over portions?
Yeah, we've, I mean, things have changed in the past, and, and the last handful of years, which Les can give you a little bit, a little bit more history on, but yes, there's some aggressive rural water districts.
Rural water districts oftentimes borrow money from the USDA. And one of, one of the conditions of that loan is that the rural water district can't do anything that would lessen its ability to repay that loan. And they've construed that to mean, even if a rural water district has a piece of property in its territory that it doesn't serve water to, to give that territory up would lessen its ability to pay back its loan. So it's protected, then they can't give up the territory.
And that's a federal thing?
USDA, yeah.
So the way, the, the city of Wichita primarily is the, is the billing party. So they do submit to the city a surcharge that is paid by customers within the city. So per connection to city of Wichita water, there's a flat $1.35 fee and then an additional 20 cents per 1,000 gallons that's reimbursed to the city. We collect that, that rate has been set since 1980. So it hasn't been looked at for a while. So, and, and this probably is like, the problem here that it doesn't necessarily manifest itself very much as of now, because a lot of this, what Rick and our pavement condition index consultant was talking about last night, a lot of our infrastructure is new or newer. We own these water lines. If something would happen to one of these water lines, have a failure and we needed to replace it, we would, we pay for it. Traditionally, like in the city of Wichita or others that have their own utility departments, their rates are set to reflect that risk. Ours doesn't generate a ton of annual revenue, and which I'll kind of talk about a little bit more. But this is something that both myself and the Director of Public Works and Utilities plan on carefully assessing over the next year, because we will get to a point one day where our infrastructure is not new any longer and we will have to maintain it.
So every time I see a city of Wichita truck digging, looks like they're replacing a pipe, they're actually charging us to do that?
Maintenance is included on that, repair maintenance, but replacement is not.
So if we will have a water main break that just, you know, gushers?
They take care of that as part of their rates.
Yeah, the, the substantial costs associated with a new water line be on us. So we generally budget $20,000 roughly in the contractual line item. So if we're gonna do a water project, we pay for the engineering of that water project. There's no commodities to speak of. Capital outlay really ebbs and flows depending on how much we have saved up from that, that, that small revenue we do get. We don't have anything proposed for 2021 as of now, no transfers. So again, this is your revenue versus expenditures. You'll see these spikes in expenditures, right? So we save up for a few years and then we do a project. And then we save up for a few years and then we do a project. And that's just all really what it's showing here. But the other thing that it's communicating to you is that fee that we receive, that surcharge and that small usage-based fee generally is around $125,000 a year that we generate. A lot of that, again, we, we stick away and kind of build that balance. So again, you see the ebb and flow of this fund, where every once in a while we'll have a project and that's where you see those contractuals, largely the engineering. Again, we do charge small portions and you can see that dollar amount for personnel for those that manage this contract with the city of Wichita or with, or contacts with rural water district. Small, very small percentages of personnel. So capital, again, that's kind of, we save up, we do a project, we go on down the, we save more, do another project.
If I can add, some of these projects, like tonight you approved the Tusky, where we said the 25%, this is where the 25% of the water would come out of. So this past year was Cornerstone 8th, we paid for part of theirs. So these are what some of the projects, and we're getting more of those. So the expenses are more, but the revenue isn't.
So, and we've talked to you about the building and permit fees that we've looked at last, two years ago. We've looked at the stormwater fees obviously last year. So routinely, we're going through our revenue sources and analyzing them to make sure that they're right-sized for the level of service our citizens expect.
And we probably need to analyze this a little more.
That's on the list. This is one that we're gonna strongly look at. So transfers, it looks like we are transferring in 2010 to 2013 pretty regularly, those are kind of.
Those were for some debt service for some water lines that the city bonded.
Thank you, Donna.
And again, very, very small amount of personnel, city personnel comes out of this. So .1 FTE for the past three years, and we're not proposing changing any of that. Questions?
So I, I do have a question, I'm just curious on this. If Wichita says we're not providing Andover water anymore, can they do that? I mean, are we on a contract with them or are we actual citi, I mean, customers that they can just shut off or?
They have responsibilities to perform their, you know, what is in the negotiated contract, yes. There's, per the agreement, yes, they're gonna provide us water, but those come up for renegotiation all the time? I mean, I shouldn't say all the time, I don't know when the.
Twenty years.
Twenty years. So definitely not all the time, twenty years.
So when's it do, when's the 20-year up?
I, I think that spike you saw there in 2010 was the last time we negotiated the, the contract with Wichita. And one of the things that changed in that contract was that any time we do a road project or one of our own sewer projects that requires relocation of water lines, city of Andover now has to pay for that relocation where prior to 2010, Wichita Water Department picked up that expense. And that's why you see that those spikes are actually a lot of projects that required some relocations.
And I think, just for reference, I think Wichita obviously is a wholesale water supplier for a number of communities in the area. I think we are the only one where they direct bill and maintain. Everybody else pays wholesale prices, buys it and then has a, a utility department that bills it and ma, that does billing and maintenance. So our, our agreement with the city of Wichita is extremely unique.
And it's less expensive for our citizens, yeah?
Yeah, I mean, yes. I mean, in order to answer that definitively, we'd have to run that analysis, but I would imagine there's some cost savings.
Ever since I've been here, it's been pretty much, yeah, way, way less expensive.
I mean, it keeps you from having to staff personnel just to be around for a water main break or a water meter set and pay for repairs that happen on and off. So coming from a city that had a water department, my feeling is it's probably substantially cheaper, yes.
So all this information that we've seen in these budget presentations, it's a lot of great information. It's all publicly available to all of the residents of the city? That's for Susan, by the way.
Yes.
Into their packets. It's all online.
Just making sure that everyone understood that all of the data for all the taxes and revenue and expenses and how it's used is publicly available, yeah?
Very much so.
I do have one question. So when we're talking about the water utility, the storm sewers, maybe ditches being, not, ditches being taken out and upgraded to whatever you put in after a ditch. Do specials then, sorry, I don't mean to bring specials up again, do specials then get allotted to the folks that live by those ditches and streets? And, you know, because we talked about the paving last night. We had the, you know, the red areas, the yellow areas. We talked about the ditch and the culverts tonight. Are specials allotted to folks that aren't in new homes, they're in old homes kind of thing?
If we, so again, it's the same with, you know, the same answer of taking a gravel street to a paved surface, right? So if you come in and you, and you do an improvement project, you definitely can assess the costs of that improvement to the benefit district, the, the properties that are benefiting from that, from the improvement. Much like when you guys approve or accept these petitions for a new subdivision, you're assessing those costs against those lots. They're the ones that are benefiting largely from the roads and the sewer and the drainage. You can do that same thing in an existing neighborhood to make improvements.
We just did that two, two meetings ago, didn't we, Joe?
Yes, for the Lafayette.
The Herman Lafayette project.
I was trying to think, I was going fast.
See, and then, but yeah, like there's times where we have considered and you guys have approved city participation in that. So maybe you assess 75% of those costs to get to the benefit district and the city at large carries 25%, whatever the percentage may be. But there are situations where the city will pick up some and the benefit district will pay for it. And that's always a balance, you know, between when we pay a city at large portion, those are largely paid for by the entire city, right? So that's always the, the conversation is do we want to take property tax paid from somebody on the north side of town or the east side of town or west side of town and take it to make an improvement to a neighborhood that they may not have any use of? So that's the rub.
Just for some clear clarification, my dear friend Homer, when they come through and clean out your ditches in front of your house, they usually fill them with air so that they will flow better. So they don't do nothing but clean out the ditch and leave it still dirt. And, and I don't know if you know this or not, but while that ditch is the city's, the owner of that house in front of that ditch usually mows it, takes care of it and does all that stuff, so.
I was talking about upgrading the ditch, not cleaning the ditch.
Well, they're upgrading my ditch right now, in my opinion. So, and now, now, now I'm gonna be treated with specials because I'm gonna plant grass in there. So I'll be special because I'll plant my own grass in the ditch. Is that what you're referring to?
I think Homer was talking about when we, when we pay the.
Thank you, yeah. That was a stretch. Yeah, we typically don't assess maintenance, so.
So one of the, the things that's been brought up a few times is like trying to normalize how we break down the percentage of the city at large versus, and it seems like we have a discussion every single time and it, I don't think it's the same every time that we come out with the same. So I wonder if we want to think about that sometime in the future so that it's never a surprise to anyone that it's always gonna be the exact same, or look at Les, he's like.
Well, that's a, and.
I know, it's never happened.
Timely, so that was, you remember, we had a long workshop meeting last night, obviously, right? And we told you that there were two things on the agenda that we pushed for a future agenda.
Oh.
So a policy regarding that was on that agenda. So we are currently, I know it was a topic of conversation last year and probably the year before, but we've had, you know, a different, you know, with Jenny's, you know, the city adminis, a lot of change, you know?
Little change.
A little bit of change. So we're circling back around, taking a look at that policy and then we're going to continue that conversation with you within the next couple workshops, depending on what those agendas look like. We're trying to keep them smaller, I promise.
Don't even, don't even suggest that. You, you, you guys are, you and Jenny are grounded from suggesting shorter.
We try.
You're grounded.
I promise we try.
We could add a second workshop every month if you'd like. Could that be shorter?
That is another option.
Oh, look, it's time to go. All right, thank you for that fine presentation. And y'all do a great job with the city, you really do. I mean, the street department, the sewer department, just goes unnoticed, it's like elves do it, you know? So you do a great job, I cannot tell you how much I appreciate it, I really do. At this time, it's members' items.
I have nothing, Mr. Mayor.
I think I probably should.
I think I probably should have something, but I don't have anything. And so to keep this short, I will say nothing.
Um, I would just say that as we're moving towards this time with COVID, and it kind of feels a little bit like it did at the beginning of the year when we didn't know day-to-day what we were gonna hear, um, that everybody just be prepared and keep on our toes the best we can. I think we were fairly fortunate as a state, the first time everything started to go on, being in middle America, we got to see the effects in some of the coastal states prior to it hitting us. Um, in a second wave, we may not have that benefit. So just keep yourself safe and your family safe, and if you can keep your neighbor safe too, that, that's, um, a great thing to just keep in mind.
Oh, just two quick things, one is, uh, be cool to look at Disc Golf again in Central Park. Yeah? Did you? Be nice.
What's Disc Golf?
Well, I can show you this app that I've got. Um, you're gonna respond, is that what you say, go ahead?
Yeah, I'd like to, because we've, I, I saw that email, I, I will say that. A email, a request that came, but yes. So we do have, and you guys haven't seen this budget presentation yet, it's part of the park presentation, that's gonna be July fourteenth, but we do have in the budget, uh, uh, our update to our ten-year park system master plan. Um, before, and I know this has been programmed and pushed, and, you know, until we figure out all these different moving parts. Um, so again, I think this is, that would be a perfect time to really solidify the location and some of the details regarding that. So I don't know if my recommendation would be that we start working on that right now, but that to be a major factor, a major input into the development of that park system master plan, which should be complete, we're hoping, by the first half of twenty twenty-one.
Sweet. Money-wise, my last, um, I think it was David North, he gave me a, a number, like ten thousand dollars per hole, which sounds kind of high, but if you were to build that as, it would be a professional course, that certainly, um, there's a few around here that bring a whole lot of players. Um, so that, that's the, that's the big number, ten thousand per hole for eighteen.
I've, I've done a budget on that already. We have a fifteen thousand dollar budget that.
For the entire course?
For the entire course.
Is it a professional?
Yes.
I'm, wow, good.
Yep.
Thank God, thank you for doing that, yeah?
And so that came out last year, uh, year before, and it was confirmed last year when we were having other options of other land we put it on.
Right.
And, uh, it was confirmed, uh, when they came, when Dynamic Disc came out to, um, to review it. And then it was still going to be the same price. So that was for all of baskets, um, the signs, the flags, everything that went on with the course. What the city would, would provide is installing it and also, uh, creating, uh, installing the concrete pad.
Yeah.
Where you would, where you would start. So, uh, so we can get this all done in fifteen thousand dollars.
Yeah, sooner the better, in my opinion.
I agree.
Yeah. I do go out there almost three, four times a di- a week to throw in our park, and I just throw at trees, and I, not that great, I keep hitting the trees, so I'd rather not keep chopping trees down, I'd rather throw it at a actual goal.
Something that we could actually do very quickly.
Yeah.
Uh, because you could turn, turn a design around in less than a month, and it can be installed in less than a month after that. So I would hate to wait till spring of twenty-one if we can actually get this accomplished from now to fall.
Where, where would it, where would the footprint be?
Um, kind of, just, um, talking out loud here, uh, starting over where our new road begins in between the pavilion and the road, going south to our, to the very corner where it opens up uh, in the very back southwest corner, wrapping around the dog park, don't, not touching dog park, wrapping around and going north, uh, and then going southwest, uh, behind the amphitheater, and finishing back up at the beginning, uh, where, where we started.
Is, is that, is that something that would, pardon my ignorance, because I really don't, I've seen it, but I don't understand it, but is, uh, uh, is that something where people travel, like, would that bring out-of-town money into town to?
Well, it could, it very well could, you could have a tournament there, especially if it's designed as a night's course.
Night?
Nice.
Nice.
No, not lighted.
As a, as a really nice course.
Oh, okay.
If it's a championship course, you'll have tournaments there.
Okay.
And those are, would be on a weekend or something. Um, so, um, it's a possibility, uh, that that could happen. Dynamic Disc is just an hour and fifteen minutes away from here. They're one of the nation's top disc golf manufacturers that put on, um, these, uh, these championship courses and these tournaments, and I've, I've played in many of them. So, uh, I, I very highly recommend it, and, and the guy who designs the course, Eric McCabe, is a acquaintance, friend of mine, and, and he, uh, he is a past, um, champion, world champion. So he's been all over the place, so he, he knows what he's doing. So he can, he can design us a course, um, that will, um, bring people in here who will want to come to our parks.
Yeah.
So, sorry to, to take it away from your.
I was actually wanting you to talk about it earlier. So since, like, most of my discs will land up in the water, can we use some of the water fund to pay, I'm kidding, okay.
Don't they float?
No.
No. But they got my name in permanent marker, so hopefully. So we have Susan Humphries here tonight, and she is an amazing person, represents us up in Topeka, does a lot of work for us. I poked her earlier a little bit, because there's one thing that was disheartening, but outside of that, for me, she does an amazing job for us, and it's, it's good to have her here tonight. Um, a lot of work up there, you're away from the, from your family for part of the year, and so it's, it's really, I'm glad she was here tonight to, for the whole meeting, although I wish she would have been there last night too, and seen if she made it through the whole meeting or not, but. And that, yeah, that's all I got.
No items.
No items.
All right. You know what, going through this COVID thing, just to touch on what Shelby said, you know, that's what I like about this particular group of people here. We don't have to agree on everything, nor do we agree on everything, but one thing I'm very impressed is the, the the civility, because it doesn't happen like that everywhere, you know what I mean? It's a, it's a, it's a work, uh, to, to get along, and even, even if you disagree wholeheartedly, uh, I'm very impressed at the, uh, uh, this ability that we carry on, and, and I'm, I'm very thankful for all of you. I appreciate that. And with that, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, thank you.
Time, there are cozy condos for senior living and a variety of choices for apartment dwellers. An unusual feature of Andover is that our city government.